Good morning, everyone. I call to order the September 21st, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick, Assistant County Counsel Jeff Muns. Commissioner West is out of the office today. Online, Commissioner Savis. We heard you. We'll turn up the volume here. In the room, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is a Housing Authority Public Hearing. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra.
Good morning.
Are you there, Commissioner Leenstra?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome. This is a public hearing. Item 1, Midyear Revision of the 2023 Action Plan and Moving-to-Work Supplement. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Tony Carter is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today's public hearing gives the Board and the public the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback about our mid-year revisions to the Fiscal Year 2324 Annual Plan. This mid-year revision was required due to the Housing Opportunity through Modernization Act referred to as the HOPMA Final Rule dated February 2023. Due to HOPMA, HUD has required all housing authorities in the nation to make very significant policy decisions and have them written in our policy documents by no later than January 1, 2024. HUD has given us a year to actually implement the large policy changes, as they will require universal changes to procedures, forms, and require extensive staff training. Many of the required HOPMA changes intersect with our Moving-to-Work policy waivers that we were looking at. So, to make good business sense, we looked at the HOPMA and the Moving-to-Work intersecting policies together and are applying for the Moving-to-Work waivers when it would be of greater benefit to our agency than the HOPMA policy. I asked the Board to focus on Attachments A and B combined, as well as the Moving-to-Work Supplement that was provided, that shows the detailed summary of all the changes. I will summarize the 10 most significant changes today and respond to any questions or concerns. Our original Moving-to-Work asset-building application lacked important homeownership details, and our staff have refined the request to give more clarity and provide participating households improved chances of success. These are more process or administrative changes, and we are noting not an overall change to the intent of the original asset-building program. We are requesting a new Moving-to-Work waiver to simplify the rent calculations for tenants. This will reduce staff time spent on files and improve the understanding of the process for tenants. We are adopting the HOPMA policy of allowing families to self-certify assets under $50,000. We are applying for a Moving-to-Work waiver to adopt triennial re-examinations for those elderly and disabled households that are on fixed incomes. This will greatly reduce annual workload and ease the burden of reporting for these households. We are applying for a Moving-to-Work waiver, allowing the Housing Authority to inspect its own units. Currently, we have to pay outside contractors to complete this work, and this will now be all handled in-house at a significant cost savings. We are applying for a Moving-to-Work waiver to award project-based vouchers to the Housing Authority-owned projects when we feel it is necessary and to our benefit. This will allow us to have a reduced procurement burden and allows us to do our own rent reasonableness determinations and allows us to increase the total PBV units we can administer and would limit the portability and moves under project-based vouchers to encourage economic stabilization of the properties we own. We are proposing changes to our waitlist for those vouchers that serve homeless populations to make the coordinated entry system the waitlist to be used instead of using the random lottery waitlist application process that is antiquated and out of date. By using the coordinated entry, we can also align service providers to the population being served. This change will streamline the preference process and reduce the need to track referrals from agencies and make it more equitable for clients to be served based on the coordinated entry system of determining who is the most vulnerable to be served first. We are proposing establishing a preference to serve Clackamas County residents before serving those on the waitlist coming from outside of Clackamas County. We are adding a workforce-ready definition to our waitlist to allow regular vouchers to be able to serve those ready to work. The change can reduce overall rental assistance costs, as families that work pay a larger rent share. This will also ensure we are not helping only the homeless, but also helping the struggling, working poor to avoid homelessness. We are proposing to change site-based waitlists for permanent supportive housing to require they also use the coordinated entry system to fill project-based units that have valuable resource connections. Those are the only 10 that we have of the major changes. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I'll move on and tell you what the next steps are.
Commissioners, do we have any questions up to now? Commissioner Scholl.
Tony, you mentioned that these changes would result in a cost-saving on money paid out to contractors. But can you do it without increasing your FTEs?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you go about ensuring that Clackamas County residents get priority on housing placement?
So, when we do an application or coordinated access entry, they're asked where they're from on those applications and where they're coming from. So, that's how we would check on the Clackamas County residency first.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments so far on this presentation? Seeing none, Tony, could you go ahead?
Today's hearing was noticed in the Oregonian on Friday, July 28th. A 45-day public comment period is required, and it started on August 10th and ends on September 25th. There is a page on our website where the draft plan is posted with instructions for submitting comments. In addition to the public posting, public comment period, and this public hearing, the Housing Authority presented its draft plan to its Resident Advisory Board on August 8th. The Resident Advisory Board consists of approximately 30 public housing and housing-choice voucher residents we serve. The group went over the components of the plan and were given time for comments and questions. The notes from that meeting are part of the official record and included in this plan as Attachment J. To date, no public comments have been received, aside from those made during the Resident Advisory Board meeting, and I would like to note that most of the Resident Advisory Board looked at these changes as very positive. All comments from this hearing and any further comments from the public, staff, and HUD will be recorded for HUD to review when we do our final submission. The Board has time after this meeting and during the public review period ending September 25th to review the entire Annual Plan and Moving-to-Work Supplement and provide additional comments that can be included in the record. The Housing Authority will present at Issues on October 3rd to move the plan and supplement to Consent Agenda on October 5th, with all Board and public comments addressed. And then a HUD submission is firmly required no later than October 18th, so that we can get our admin plan and ACOP updated by the January 1 required deadline. That's it. That concludes my...
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments regarding this? I will now open the public meeting for public testimony, and I will take the first in-person person to testify in person on this particular hearing only. We are talking about the mid-year revision of the 2023 Action Plan from HUD.
I have no business with this particular meeting.
No. Your, sir, your public comments will come at the very end. Yes. This is a public hearing on this topic only. Tony, is there anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing on this, and I will ask the Board if there's any further questions on this. Okay? Staff, please incorporate any feedback that you received today or on email and update the plan for the Board's approval at a future business meeting. Thank you very much, Tony. Thank you very much, Ann Leenstra, for appearing with us today.
You're welcome.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Ashley, Chair, would you please convene as the Development Agency Board?
I will convene as the Development Agency Board. Thank you.
Next is the Development Agency Public Hearing. Item 1, Second Reading of Ordinance 05-2023 and Ordinance Amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan and Report. Total value is $1.2 million. Funding is through the Development Agency. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, will present. We'll just watch you as you walk forward. Take your time. Sorry. Go ahead.
My apologies. It's been so long since I've been at a second public reading. I didn't know I was supposed to provide some testimony today. So, again, the Board's very familiar with this amendment. It's an amendment to our Clackamas Industrial Area Plan. It's an amendment to build upon a partnership we have with Clackamas Fire District to assist them in transferring some funds to assist with the expansion and improvement of their training facility out off south of Highway 212. This effort basically extends from a partnership we've had with the district back early 2000s about local investment from some of our urban renewal districts to their needs throughout the area. So, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do the Commissioners have any questions at this point? Seeing none, I will now open the public meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first on this particular hearing of topic. I see no one in the room who would like to offer testimony on this public hearing. Tony, is there anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing and ask the Board, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved we read the ordinance by title only, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for 0. Would the Clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance 5-2023 and Ordinance Amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan and Report.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? I will entertain a motion. Go ahead, Commissioners.
I move we approve Ordinance 05-2023 and Ordinance Amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan and Report.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve Ordinance 05-2023 and Ordinance Amending the Clackamas Industrial Area Development Plan and Report. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I would now adjourn as a Development Agency and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you very much, Dan Johnson, for bringing the proposal forward. Gary, what's next?
Next is a public hearing. Item 1, Approval of a Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-008 and Annexation to the Tri-City Service District. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Jeff Muns, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. This matter, of course, is another annexation to one of our service districts. This property is located off South Holcomb Boulevard, east of the Holcomb School, and west of South Winston Drive. It's two vacant tax lots, 35.13 acres. It's currently assessed at just over $4 million. The district has a sewer line, sewer main, within Ames Street to the west of property to serve this development. The reason for this annexation is the property owner wishes to develop 141-unit residential planned unit development to be called Sears Farms. It's adjacent to the Sears Farms property. In review of this matter, it has been done in appropriate process under Oregon law, as well as Metro Code, and is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which in Section 7A provides the goals for development of sanitary sewage treatment systems in the area. Recommendation is to approve this annexation, 2023-008, to the Tri-City Service District.
Do Commissioners have any questions or comments about this? I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on this particular annexation? Seeing none. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to comment on this particular annexation?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion by the Board. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Board Order Approving Boundary Change 2023-008 and Annexation to the Tri-City Service District.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved approval of the Board approving the Boundary Change 2023-008 and Annexation to the Tri-City Service District, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for 0. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for all of your votes on these three public hearings. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 1, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Finance. Item 1, Approval of a Lease of Commercial Space at the Abernathy Property to House the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Marine Patrol Unit. Total value is $211,922.02 over three years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Transportation and Development. Item 1, Approval of a Sale of Eight Parcels to Columbia Land Trust. Transfer value is $3,139.91. Funding through Columbia Land Trust. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services. Item 1, Approval of a Board Order Authorizing a Purchase Order to Renew Annual Software Support Service from Oracle America Incorporated for PeopleSoft Software. Purchase order value is $568,682.82. Funding through departmental cost allocations. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item 1, Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Cascade AIDS Project for HIV Testing and Counseling Services. Agreement value is $75,146 for two years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item 2, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Catholic Charities for Supportive Housing Services at Good Shepherd Village. Contract value is $1,063,268 for one year. Funding through Supportive Housing Service Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval to Apply for All Internal and External Annual Continuum of Care Program Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Grant value is $5,481,184 for one year. Funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development with a $1,370,296 match funded through Supportive Housing Service Measure Funds, other funding sources, and $107,455 in budgeted county general funds. Item 4, Approval of Amendment 2, Expanding the Scope of Work, Modifying the Term, and Increasing Funding of a Personal Services Contract with Dugood Multnomah for Veterans Village Services. Amendment value is $32,252.98. Agreement value is increased to $1,717,553.19 for five years. Funding through Supportive Housing Service Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners wish to remove any item off this Consent Agenda?
No.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
This is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
One item, Approval of a Joint Funding Agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for Johnson Creek Water Quality and Flow Monitoring. Total agreement value is $61,800 for five years. Funding is through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Does any Commissioner, excuse me, Director, wish to remove any item from this particular Consent Agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
Director Schrader has moved for the approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Director Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Well, Commissioners, we're just moving along this agenda quite nicely today, aren't we? Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. As a reminder, excuse me, I will now open the public meeting for public testimony and take in-person people first. I have one card here. Will C. Thorman come forward? Please state your name, your area of residence.
My name is Curtis Thorman.
We have to come sit down, sir, and speak into the microphone, so we can record you and hear you. Thank you.
My name is Curtis Thorman. I live at 695 June Drive in the city of Malala County, Clackamas. And the reason I've come before you guys, and I'd like to thank you for hearing me, is I would like to ask for you to investigate, use your ability to have a non-local party investigate a crash that was involved, a Malala police officer off-duty when he was leaving a whiskey tasting party that was from another former deputy. The reason I bring this for you and ask for an independent investigation is because the case was suspended, it wasn't forwarded to the district attorney's office, and also the county sheriff officer that was investigating this called the Malala Police Department, trying to get the Sergeant Kessler's truck information, where he was at, because it rolled a couple times. And they were unable to furnish the investigating deputy with that information. The two Malala police officers wrote reports, and they have since disappeared. I've made requests through an attorney. I made three different requests, and the Malala claims that they do not have the reports. I've, I know this as absolute truth. The two officers that were on duty told me they wrote it. I have a phone recording, and I've also reported this to the Clackamas County Professional Services, and they said it was unactionable. I also reported this to the Department of Public Safety, and neither of those governing bodies would look into it. And they didn't ask. I told them, and as you can see in the paperwork that I provided counsel, they never asked for the phone recording or the other evidence I had. So, I would humbly request that you would ask an independent agency to come in and investigate this. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. You just presented to staff before I walked in many pages here, and I haven't read them, and I really know nothing about this.
Right.
But as a matter of practice and maybe law, the Board of County Commissioners does not conduct independent investigations. But I'm going to have our attorney, Jeffrey Muns, speak to this. Would you please?
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, Chair. We've received a copy of these papers as well, and we will route them to the appropriate authorities or agencies that would need to look into this. I have not had a chance to go through this thoroughly, but if there's any discussion that you like, this type of discussion is best held in an executive session, as far as what our legal options are at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Okay. Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
You bet.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You bet. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify today? I don't see anyone at this point. Tony, is there anyone online?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Wow. That's the end of our public communication today. I will now close this portion of the business meeting and move on. Gary, you're up.
Exodus County Administrator Update, that's me. I like to use my time to share great work our county staff does every day. Today, I want to recognize our Clackamas County Tourism Division, also called Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. They recently conducted a tour called the Not So Boring Tour, which was a tour of the community of Boring and the city of Sandy, where they bring in tourism and public relations professionals all across Oregon to show off the great work we do here in Clackamas County for tourism. And it was a great success. Over 16 people attended the tour of Boring and Sandy, and here's some of the feedback we received for our staff. From the city of Camby's Economic Development Team, they wrote, "Learning about Bigfoot from the North American Bigfoot Center, Cat's Moon Coffee and Boring, and the Oregon Trail History Through Sandy was also fascinating." Travel Oregon wrote, "I had so much fun learning the history of places in Clackamas County. It was invaluable. Thank you." Travel Portland wrote, "It was highly beneficial for me to learn more about Oregon's Mount Hood Territory and to discover all the gems that I was introduced to on the tour. Thank you for putting together a wonderful day." So, just an example of the work our tourism staff does to promote Clackamas County and our economic development through tourism. That's my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much for that, Gary. I will now proceed on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Yes. Well, I am heading out today and have someone watching my pups to head down to Klamath, where the Association of Oregon Counties is having their retreat and meeting, their legislative retreat. They'll be talking about the due structure one more time. It's been an ongoing discussion for a while, and I think we'll finally finalize things. And I'll be reporting on what's been happening at the national level at NACO since I serve on that board. Another inter- Another interesting thing that just happened to me yesterday, I have been asked to give an application to the governor's office to be on the Workforce Systems Advisory Board. So I'm going to go ahead and do that, because workforce is one thing I'm really always interested in as part of my portfolio, getting people jobs, working with our businesses to see what that pipeline is, working with our educators and our community colleges to make sure that people get the skill sets they need, as well as our unions. I have two boys who are plumbers and steam fitters and are working really hard right now. The other thing I just want to mention, and this is kind of a tough one. Yesterday, I was asked, I couldn't go because I was here, and my first duty is here as a commissioner. But evidently, the Democratic Party of Clackamas County, this is the second time near front, has been vandalized. So they had, yeah, yeah, they had a brick thrown in about three or four weeks ago, and now they had shots through the glass. Yeah, vandal, yeah, yeah. And so, of course, everybody's upset about that. And the reason I mention it is not to be polarizing, but I would no more accept any vandalism with our colleagues who happen to be members of the Republican Party on their folks, because they have a right to have a safe and secure building and be part of the democratic process. And it would just make me sad that this vandalism has happened. And we did have a number of other elected officials who did show and said, you know, "This is not the way we do things in Clackamas County, and I truly believe that. This is not what we do in Clackamas County." And I will object to any kind of vandalism against anyone, no matter what party, because it's our duty and our right to participate in a democracy. It's part of what we do as citizens, and no one should feel afraid to do so. So I'm sad about that, folks. I did tell folks who could be there yesterday that I would mention it today at the meeting. But once again, I see this as not ideological. I don't see it as Republican or Democrat. I really see it's more how we treat each other as fellow citizens in the state of Oregon and in our county. So thank you for letting me wax eloquent, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I was not aware that a second assault had occurred, not that the first one is acceptable at all, any violence whatsoever to any organization who wants to express and honor their First Amendment rule of expression is just not acceptable at all. I am rather surprised at that. I don't condone it, I actually abhor violence of this nature at all levels, and I'm sorry that has had to happen.
And I hope that nothing happens.
I hope it's being investigated. I believe the Oregon City Police Department has jurisdiction in that area. I assume they're trying to figure that out, just like we're trying to figure out other acts of vandalism throughout the county. I don't believe it's totally isolated to the Democrat Party, although it sure is.
I agree, it's not.
It's not isolated, but any of the acts of violence needs to stop. Thank you very much for that. Bringing that forward, Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, sure, normally I would give you all of my J-PAC report, but I am recovering from a cold and a sore throat, and so I'm going to preserve my voice and just yield the floor to Commissioner Scholl.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas, I appreciate your attendance, it means a lot, even though you're feeling under the weather. Up next, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. Commissioner Savas, I hope you get well soon, hope to see you back in the office on Monday morning. On crime, fighting crime requires every citizen to help our police and our sheriff deputies do their jobs. We've seen the increasing crime in Portland, and actually, we've also seen businesses and families moving to Clackamas County to a safer place to live. And so, every citizen in this county can participate in fighting crime. If you would like to meet with the sheriff's office on a non-emergency crime, you can call them to meet in person. You can also go to the clackamas.us sheriff online crime reporting to report other crimes you might observe. It takes everybody's work to keep Clackamas County a safe place to live. On education and our children, today, the State Board of Education is considering suspending the essential skills learning requirements for another four years. Senate Bill 744, which was passed in 2021, suspended the essential skills learning requirement through the end of this school year. Now, today, the Board of Education is considering extending that all the way to the end of the 2027-28 school year. They have a meeting open to the public today. You can go to the State Board online to see that, contact your state legislator. We must ensure that our children are graduating from schools in this county with the best education possible. Although K-12 education is not one of the core responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners of the county, I, and I think my fellow commissioners are very concerned about K-12. Parents, get involved, see the meeting today, make an impact. On health, are you healthy? There's a milder form of COVID going around. We think we might have some folks here on the county staff that might have come down with COVID. Masks, no thank you. Mandates, mm-mm, no thank you. I fought those in 2020 and 2021, I'll do it again. But in the meantime, let's all do everything we can to keep ourselves and our families healthy. On Measure 110 Reform, on Monday, there were two initiatives filed in Salem to repeal or modify Measure 110. I'd like everybody to become familiar with those initiatives, and we need to either radically modify Measure 110 or eliminate it, because it is hurting our communities. On voting, I don't know if you know it, but the legislature passed here earlier in the year a bill that requires the Secretary of State to obtain livestream cameras in our rooms in which ballots are being counted. It's a step forward to increase transparency in voting. A lot of people still aren't happy with mail-in ballots or voting machines, but we can only do a little bit at a time. On civility in politics, Commissioner Schrader, I didn't know that you would have this on your comment list today, but I did too. And I wanted to say, people might not know that recently, one of our mayors, Tim Hall in Garibaldi, he's a black man, he was elected in 2021, I think. But anyway, he found political friction to be so great, he stepped down as mayor, Garibaldi, and I think it's very unfortunate. He's a good man, but I'm no stranger to attempts in intimidation in politics. I suffered through that a lot in 2021. I am not unfamiliar with 05:30 in the morning death threats. Now, I can handle it, but a lot of people cannot. So we have a presidential election year coming up next year, and things are going to get tense. And I encourage all people, regardless of party affiliation, to maintain respect, kindness, honesty, and fairness in politics. How about we do what our grandmothers and our mothers told us when we were kids, to obey the golden rule? That's the way forward. Finally, you know, one more comment on politics and decision-making. I ask every resident of Clackamas County to take a moment. Consider your core values, what's really important to you. For me, it's the Constitution of the United States is amended, family values, law and order 24/7/365, and Judeo-Christian values. Those are the four things that I bounce every item that comes across my desk in this county off of. And I encourage everyone to take a moment, look at your values, ask yourself where you're at, and how we might change our behavior to create a better Clackamas County, a better state of Oregon, and a better United States of America. And with that, I thank everybody in Clackamas County for your time this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. It's been a hugely busy week and month coming up. Just yesterday, our circle of honor, we had a ceremony showing awareness of September being Suicide Month. Some of us spoke to that, we put up signs, basically asked the question, "How do you feel?" Ask a question, that's all you have to do, and it makes a world of difference. Last night, we had a quarterly NCPRD Parks Meeting in District, and we welcomed the newly elected leadership team. They came forward and made a presentation. We also had some updates on projects going on in the Parks District, and we look forward to more relationship building and communication with them. Regarding Measure 110, it seems our news agencies are paying attention to it quite rigorously. On Tuesday, you may have seen on KATU at 6:00 PM, a town hall, of which I appeared as a panelist along with others, explaining the hardship that Measure 110 has made on society. For those who are unaware, Measure 110 has legalized some of the most lethal drugs known to people. Cocaine, heroin, meth, and now fentanyl can be taken without little regard to one's own public safety and/or what laws may have been broken in the past that now have been legalized. It's caused a scourge on our society, it has increased crime, it has increased homelessness. The petitioner to send this to the vote for the people, Max Williams, appeared with me and a couple other electeds from the region. It was a great discussion, you can see it online in YouTube. I suggest everybody go and view that if you want a real quick education on that meeting. I would like to thank Governor Kotek for awarding Clackamas County almost an additional $1 million of money that she has set aside to work on targeting rural Oregon for households for supported housing and other services that deemed appropriate with the spending of this money. Evidently, Multnomah County has more money than they can spend, so she took some out of their pot and spread it around. Clackamas County was one of the largest recipients of that money. We are making great strides on reducing homelessness. Clackamas County has reduced homelessness for the last two years in a row by 30% each, and we have met our housing goals of hundreds and thousands of units that are online, and we are building current places for people to live in all income levels, supported housing, and we are just moving forward on a lot of really, really good initiatives. We also had, this last week, a summit, the Clackamas County Addiction Recovery Summit, where we brought in people from all over America and North America. These are the top leaders on how to have treatment centers for people with addictions. It was very well received, we have some very good ideas going forward. We were able to pay for this by the use of the opioid dollars, which was a nationwide settlement regarding the use of opioids that I believe most every county in America has received. So we're taking a settlement of the opioid addiction dollars and putting that back in to try to solve the addiction problem in Clackamas County. Look for more to come on that. It has been just really eye-opening to me. I've learned a lot, as I know our Board of Commissioners have learned a lot, and I think I can collectively say we're pretty excited about moving forward. Commissioners, you have on your email, and for the folks out there, Congresswoman Lori Chavez-Dreemer invited, and the committee, she sits on the Transportation Committee in Congress, she invited the National Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg to come forward. And she really grilled him and asked him, "What will you do if ODOT does not answer the environmental assessment statement to your satisfaction and to the satisfaction of the law? And how is it that federal tolls can be approved on this without those answers being done?" And his answers were remarkable. He says, "They can't." And then she really pressed him, and it's in your emails, Commissioner, really pressed it, "Then will you stop the program if they do not meet the requirements?" He said yes. So we'll see what happens with that. We'll see what happens with that. ODOT does need to abide by the law, and we have, Clackamas County, have presented a 30-page answer to their 2,000-page report on that, where they did not satisfy the needs of the environmental statements that they were supposed to do. Commissioners, we've just doing a lot of business. I appreciate you all for attending, I appreciate you all for all your work you do. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.